Good evening. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education, September 14th, 2005. If you are viewing from home, you can follow along with our agenda. Our agendas can be found at our website, which is www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you go to the School Boards tab and hover over that, you can drop down to the agendas and you can follow along for this evening. The type of meeting that we're having this evening is a Committee of the Whole meeting. That type of meeting is one in which we will have a lot of discussion about issues, but we will not be voting on issues at this time. Items that will be discussed this evening will either be referred on to our next meeting for a vote, if the board is ready to vote at that time, or perhaps they will be sent back to administration for a request for further information. So you may see a lot of discussion on items tonight, but you will not see votes on these items. Votes on most of the items that will be before us tonight will come next week. First item on our agenda is Audience Communications, and we do have Lloyd Romick, who is asked to be heard. We also have an audible timer, three-minute timer, for the benefit of the board and those who are communicating with the board in order to make sure that we're keeping everybody on time. Mr. Romick?
Recently, you passed a policy that says you can forbid videotaping at a community forum. Previously, you passed policies restricting the taping of your voting meetings to the side or back of the room, then again, to only the back of the room. However, you left something out, namely that a school board does not have the power to write law. The state never granted you that power. As such, there is no penalty under the law for ignoring those policies. So I ask you the same question that I asked Randy. If I recorded a community forum or from the side of the room, then what law would I be breaking? Thank you.
As a factual correction, under the law, the school board does have the obligation to allow taping, be it audio or videotaping, at their public meetings. However, we do have the right to make sure that it is not in a disruptive manner. This board chose an area that is visible from the board to the person making any kind of audio, photography, or videotaping, and making sure that it is not in a disruptive manner. We are absolutely within the rights of the law in doing so. Further, as a point of clarification and factual correction, the community forums are not school board meetings under the law. That has been verified, and what we are doing is anytime this group meets, and there is a quorum and this group is conducting business, we are bound by the Open Meetings Act. We will allow videotaping, and we will allow it from the place that has been determined to be not disruptive to any of the participants. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Committee of the Whole, and is the Certification of Delegates and Alternates for the MASB Delegate Assembly. Mrs. Oquist, do you like to begin with this item tonight? Go right ahead.
Certainly. Every year, as you probably recall, the board has the opportunity to identify voting delegates and alternate delegates for the MASB, the Michigan Association of School Board Conference. It will be held, the Delegate Assembly will be held this year on Thursday, October 22nd, in Traverse City at 7:30 PM. So for a school district our size, we are able to send up to four voting delegates and also identify alternate delegates. Generally, what this board has done is they have identified members who are certain that they are going to be voting delegates, and then additional board members who may be on the fence, or maybes at this time, identified as alternate delegates. And so we would certainly be happy to submit that information for you on your behalf, once that has been identified. So I'll turn it back over to the board for anyone to speak to that. If they plan to attend, we could certainly identify them as voting delegates.
All righty. And board members, for the benefit of the public, this board takes a very active participation in the conferences and the classes offered by Michigan Association of School Boards in order to keep ourselves educated on all the issues that may be coming before this board. This particular conference is falling on a weekend when there are a number of conflicts within our own school district, and I suspect that we may not have delegates at this conference, which frankly, I don't have a problem with because we have representatives at almost every conference that is put on by MASB. That being said, if you do know this evening whether you definitely are going to be in attendance on the Thursday night specifically, what we're talking about is the delegate conference. It's Thursday night at 7:30. The problem is, for a lot of folks, it is in Traverse City, so that presents a problem with folks getting off work in time to be there. This conference has moved around the state quite a bit to try to keep it as fair as possible for all of the districts in the state of Michigan. This one is very convenient for the folks who live up north, and it's not so convenient for us. Is anybody in our group planning on being in attendance at that conference on Thursday evening specifically by 7:30? No?
Not specifically. There's a possibility I'll be able to, but I just don't know right now.
Okay. All righty. There's no harm in putting our names down as delegates or alternates. I would suggest that if Mr. Johnson is our closest to a yes, we'll put him down as a delegate.
Certainly. I guess that's me.
That's it. You win the prize. And Mrs. Oquist, are any of the rest of you maybes on that? If anybody else is a maybe, I'll put you down as a delegate. No? Okay. You can go ahead and put the rest of our names down in any order then. That way, if our plans change, we have that freedom to do that. But if not, we won't be doing that.
Certainly.
And even if you're not available to attend that evening, if you'd like to attend classes and so forth, they are very, very beneficial.
Do we have to vote on that at the regular meeting, or we just have to send it?
I believe that you're right. I think we do have to vote on that, don't we?
Yes, we will include it on next week's agenda.
Okay.
And then Mrs. Wozniak, following that, will submit those names online.
Okay.
Okay.
And next week is our voting meeting?
Yes.
The 21st.
21st. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our Curriculum Committee, and Mrs. Laura.
Thank you, President Burton. We have one item on the agenda for the Curriculum Committee today, and that is our Quarterly Focus School Report, and Mrs. Ellis will be giving that to us tonight.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Laura, and good evening, everyone. I am pleased this evening to have an opportunity to share with the Board of Education our fourth-quarter report on our focus schools. Earlier in the year, I presented the other three quarterly reports to the board. These reports reflect the efforts of our school and our district to reduce the achievement gap of our students in our focus schools. And we have five focus schools in our district. They are Cass, Garfield, Frost, Churchill, and Franklin. And the State Department provides us with a template for the quarterly reports. I have completed the template, and as in past practice, I will provide Mrs. Oquist with copies of the quarterly report, and she will include it in her weekly update to the board. The state also designates, when we present our quarterly report, they have designated September as the month for the fourth quarter report. They've also designated the months that this quarterly report must include, and they must include the months of June, July, and August. And since we only had school two months during that time, what you're going to hear in the quarterly report are the efforts that occurred this past summer. You're going to hear of the efforts that I shared with the board during the summer academic presentation, our summer programs that we had to support students academically. So I'm going to briefly highlight the many details that I shared with the board that evening. But before I get into the Focus School Report, what I'd like to spend a couple minutes with the board is explaining to the board the new exit criteria that the State Department released last month. And this is criteria that was established to determine if focus schools would be retained as focus schools, or they would be released as focus schools. I provided Mrs. Oquist with a memo that details that process, and I know that she shared it with you in her weekly update, but I thought I would provide you with another copy and just go through that this evening with you. The Michigan Department of Education submitted an amendment to the Flexibility Waiver for the ESEA, and it was approved. And as a result of that, the State Department was able to have approved criteria for retaining and releasing focus schools. And there are two criterias that focus schools can meet in order to be released. One of the criteria is that the bottom 30% of student achievement would be improving at a rate greater than the bottom 30% of the state's student performance. Or the bottom 30% of a school's student performance, and these are on state tests, would have an achievement level that was greater than the state's bottom 30%. So there are two criteria. One, that the bottom 30% is increasing their performance at a rate greater than the state, or that the overall achievement is greater than the state. Then the state identified cohort groups of focus schools. So the cohort group of 2012 is made up of schools that were identified as focus schools during the 2012 school year, or as a result of some 2012 student assessment data. And that group includes three of our focus schools. It includes Cass, Garfield, and Frost. For that cohort group, the State Department looked at MEEP and MME data from the 2012 school year, and the 2012-2013 school year, and the 2013-2014 school year. So they looked at the assessment data from those two years, and they looked at the achievement rate of the bottom 30%, and the improvement rate at the bottom 30%. Now, a school can meet that criteria for both years using the achievement, or both years using the improvement rate, or one-year achievement rate and one-year improvement rate. So there's some flexibility that's allowable. Applying that criteria to our three focus schools, Cass and Frost were released from focus school status. So they are no longer focus schools, and they no longer have to complete any of the focus school requirements. So you won't hear about them in tonight's quarterly report. Our other two remaining schools, Churchill and Franklin, they're in the 2013 cohort rate. The 2013 cohort group is using MEEP and MME data from the 2013-14 school year, and M-Step data from the 2014-15 school year. And as you know, we don't have any M-Step results yet. Therefore, we don't know the status of Churchill and Franklin as far as their focus school release. So currently, they are being retained as focus schools until that data is released, the data is evaluated, and then they will make a determination if either one of those schools will be released, or if they will be retained as focus schools. So you're going to hear about our high school efforts this summer to reduce achievement gaps. Yes, Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you. Mrs. Ellis, what do you anticipate the district getting that information?
Well, I will tell you that the message has changed over time. We were originally told the end of August, September. Then we were told we would receive preliminary data in September. Schools would get hard copy data in October, and we would have data for the Annual Education Report, which typically, September is the month that I present the Annual Education Report, and schools present their reports, that we would have that data by November. As of the middle of last week, I was told that it's looking closer to October or November for the release of the data. More towards the end of October and early November.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? About the entire process of retaining and releasing focus schools?
No, it's good news.
Why the difference in the timing of the cohort groups?
Because in 2012 is when Frost, Garfield, and Cass were originally identified as focus schools. And then in the 2013 school year is when Churchill and Franklin were identified as focus schools. And then there's a 2014 cohort group. We don't have any schools in the 2014 cohort group.
Okay, thank you.
So it's the year in which they were originally identified as focus schools. Okay, so I'm going to move on to our report of our focus schools. So our quarterly report will include the efforts that occurred this past summer in our summer academic programs, and I'm just going to highlight the details that I shared with the Board of Education. So our Garfield students attended Camp Frost. It was a four-week program that ran Monday through Thursday, from July 6th to the 30th. Students exiting kindergarten through sixth grade could participate in the program. There was a three-hour block of time. Ninety minutes were spent on literacy, with an emphasis on reading comprehension and oral reading fluency. Writing was also a component of the literacy block, with an emphasis on persuasive argument writing, because that's supported by the Common Core. There was a 45-minute math block daily, where basic facts and math computation was emphasized, and we integrated technology in with the reading, the writing, and the math. Students also had a PE class daily, and if you remember, the Ann Arbor Hands-on Science Museum visited Camp Frost for a day, and students rotated through 10 different hands-on science experiments, and it really was a delightful experience for the students. We also had Students Helping Students Literacy Program that was held at Garfield School. It ran for three weeks, Monday through Thursday, July 13th through the 30th. Students exiting kindergarten and first grade from across the district were invited to attend. It was a two-hour block of time, where phonemic awareness, word study, phonics, reading comprehension, oral reading fluency, and writing in response to reading occurred daily. We also ran a Franklin Focus Program that was held at McKinley, because if you remember, Franklin was under construction this summer. It was a three-week program that ran Monday through Thursday, August 3rd through the 20th. It was for exiting eighth-grade students who were going to be entering Franklin High School as freshmen. The emphasis was on literacy skills, with a strong focus on writing and writing across the curriculum. We also had our high school summer school program that ran five weeks, Monday through Thursday. That was held at Churchill High School. It ran June 29th through July 30th. Students predominantly were enrolling in credit recovery classes, and we had this year a 98% passing rate for the students who participated in our summer school program, which is really an outstanding accomplishment. And so that concludes tonight's fourth quarter Focus School Report to our board, which we must do at a public meeting, so we've accomplished that task this evening, too. I'd be happy to answer any questions that board members may have.
Any questions or comments for Mrs. Ellis? Mrs. Jarvis?
Do you know offhand the percentage of the student population at Garfield who attended the summer program?
I do not, but if you would like that information, I can certainly provide it to you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? President Burton, that concludes the Curriculum Committee for this evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes.
A quick question. Going back to 2A, are we going to put that on the consent agenda for the MASB delegates? Is that consent? I did not.
I'm fine with consent agenda, and that item is open. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mrs. Ellis.
You're very welcome. Thank you for this opportunity.
All right. The next item, item four on our agenda, is Finance Committee. Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Burton. Tonight, on the Finance Committee, we have one issue to address. That's the PEP equipment, which was recently purchased. Mrs. Abbey would normally do that. She's not available tonight, so Mrs. Oquist will take her place.
I will. Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. We are very pleased to bring to you this evening a request for additional equipment for our secondary schools under the Carol M. White PEP grant. Just a quick recall on that. We are in our third year of this second PEP grant awarded to Livonia Public Schools. The total grant amount was just over $1.3 million. And again, we are in our third year, and we are making a recommendation for a purchase of equipment this evening totaling $25,107.96. U.S. Games was awarded a contract for this equipment from the U.S. Communities Government Purchasing Alliance, and they have worked through a competitive solicitation of bid in accordance with purchasing rules and regulations. Again, this equipment would be utilized by all of our secondary schools. We refer to this equipment as culturally relevant, and another way to look at that is it's relatively appealing to our young adolescent, our young adult fitness folks, and so they'll be used by the students at all of those schools. And this equipment has been identified by not only Mrs. Archibald, who helps coordinate the PEP grant, but also our physical education teachers in the schools. And they also have the opportunity at state and national conferences to see demonstrations of a lot of this equipment that is high-interest equipment, that really works to promote one of the major goals of the PEP grant, which is a penchant for lifelong fitness and lifelong physical exercise. So our staff will receive or have received training on the use of this equipment, and if approved next week, then we'll go ahead with the purchase as soon as possible. Just a quick note to respond, there was a question regarding the remaining funds in the PEP grant, so I did include that in your memo, but I would just like to take a moment to briefly cover that with you. Again, we have approximately $457,000 remaining for year three, and that includes a carryover of about $75,000 from year two, and then all of the funding that has just recently been released for year three. And so we are going to move forward again. That covers the cost of professional development, equipment, training for teachers, curriculum materials, project coordination, evaluation. We collect a significant number of data points and report that out to the federal government at the end of each year in accordance with our PEP grant guidelines. Remaining in the equipment, if the specific question was related to equipment, we have approximately, after this purchase, $163,000 for use for equipment. And again, that would be for any or all of our secondary schools. So you may recall, one of our large purchases earlier was to update all of the fitness centers at each of the high schools, and so we'll continue to look at that and bring to you later this year some additional pieces for those rooms, and then again, purchases for the physical education program. So we'd like to recommend this for purchase, and we'd like to recommend this to be on the regular agenda.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Oquist? Thank you very much.
Certainly.
Where is all of the equipment stored?
That's a great question. So you'll-
I only ask great questions.
We do have some storage areas within either the field house or the competition gym, so there are some closets that exist. You may notice that a couple of these pieces on here are also storage racks that make this equipment portable, that can be brought out to, whether it's outdoors, or use in the field house or in the competition gym, so it can be used in any of those areas. Primarily, it's stored within either the field house or the cells within the competition gym.
So is the equipment going to be generally split between the three high schools?
It will be the three high schools, and also the equipment goes to the three middle schools on a lesser level, because it's usually allocated out roughly on a per-pupil basis. But some of these items are specifically identified by a school or a level, so the middle school teachers may indicate we have some additional needs in this particular area. And so you'll see some of these items were identified specifically by middle school teachers, high school teachers, or both, the department chairs.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? That's the total finance report. This is Madam President.
And this will then go on the regular agenda next week?
Yes, please.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is Item 5, Building in Sight. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. We have on your agenda two items, 5A and 5B, and we're going to be suggesting, and Mr. Armelagus will start us off on this, and perhaps I can explain a little bit, to remove Item A from the agenda because we need to do a little more checking on that. An issue was brought to our attention by Ms. McDonald, I understand, earlier today. I've done some checking on it myself, and I think we need to do a little more investigation just to make sure that we have the right companies. Perhaps Nick can-
Yeah, yeah. So I want to thank Mrs. McDonald for bringing that to our attention, and we will try to resolve this issue with the recommended vendor as soon as possible, as early as tomorrow. So I will make some phone calls and hopefully get this clarification straightened out, and then obviously bring it back to the next Committee of the Whole meeting.
Okay. I have one question. Is this delay, then, of approximately a month, going to cause problems with-
Not that I currently am aware of, so.
Okay. We'll still see on the right time.
Yeah. I mean, I could get a resolution as early as tomorrow, and we could still, I mean, based on your recommendation, we could put it back on the agenda for next week, but I don't know if we want to discuss it with the Committee of the Whole first.
If you'd like me to explain what the issue is. The recommended contractor, Controlled Temperatures, Inc., there's a bit of a confusion because Controlled Temperatures, Inc., according to the state records, indicates that they were incorporated in August of 2011. The only thing they ever did was file articles of incorporation. There are no annual reports filed, which means, as far as the state goes, is concerned, after, I think it's three years of not filing, they automatically dissolve you. All you really have to do, from a company's standpoint, is file your annual reports, pay the annual fee, and you're reinstated. However, the other corporation, which has been in existence since 1970, continues to be a viable, active corporation, is Controlled Temperatures Company, Inc. When Ms. Abbey secured both the Mechanical Contractors License and the state sales tax license, the state sales tax license is in the name of Controlled Temperatures Company license, the state's sales tax license is in the name of Controlled Temperatures Company, Inc., but the Mechanical Contractors License is in the name of Controlled Temperatures, Inc. Ironically, the owner of both of those companies is the same individual. In terms of mechanical licenses, mechanical contractor licenses, you can, when you try and get it in the name of a corporation, they require that there be a licensed contractor. The contractor whose name appears on the Mechanical Contractors License for Controlled Temperatures, Inc. is the same individual who owns Controlled Temperatures Company, Inc. So we have the sales tax license being in the name of one company, which is the presently active company, and we have the Mechanical Contractors License in the name of the automatically dissolved company, but the contractor's name on that is the same individual. So we need to do a little bit of checking to determine whether or not there is, in fact, a Mechanical Contractors License in the name of Controlled Temperatures Company, Inc., so that we're consistent across the board. So Nick and I talked about that before we came down and said, we think the best thing to do is to remove this from the agenda, make a couple of calls tomorrow, see if we can get some consistency here, and then bring it back. Does that make logical sense?
In as much as it's possible.
It's, when you get a contractor's license in the name of a company, they always want the name of a licensed contractor. So this individual is a licensed contractor. It may be that the mechanical license just was misissued. The mechanical license that is active is effective through sometime in 2016.
Yes, 8/31/2016.
2016. So that license is active and would cover the time period. It's just the name on it that we want to make sure that we have the right folks, so... Ms. McDonald?
Thank you. Nick, could you verify, too, that they have insurances compliance and in the right name?
That'd be great. Yes, I would.
All right, thank you.
Good question. President Burton?
May I suggest that, assuming that this is a paperwork issue, as it appears to be, and knowing that we've done work with this company many times, I understand, Mr. Armalagus?
Yes.
Okay. May I suggest that we go on with our conversation so that assuming that all the paperwork does come through, as we anticipate that it will, we can go ahead and vote on this next week? Is that reasonable? And then if it does not come through as we think it would, we will readdress it at the next committee of the whole meeting?
Yes.
Good suggestion. We can do that.
Is that all right with everybody?
Yeah.
So why don't you go ahead, Nick?
With that the next agenda item, or...
With that agenda item.
Go ahead and just discuss that.
Okay.
I'm sorry. One more question. And I was just more curious than anything. Was Churchill that didn't need to be repaired?
Churchill was the one that didn't need to be repaired. These two annex buildings, the air handler units are past their useful life.
Okay, so Churchill's just getting a repair? It's not...
Churchill's getting replaced because it needed to be replaced. It was an emergency replacement.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay. I just wondered why it wasn't on the bid list.
Yeah, yeah. And it's already been replaced.
Already?
Yeah, yeah.
Awesome. All right, perfect.
Nick, one question. On the sheet, I noticed that the warranty part, for some of them, the warranty is listed, like controlled temperature and Danboys and so on, but for Temperature Services, it says there's no charge for the warranty. Is the warranty included in the price, then, or is that...
Are you talking for a controlled temperature?
For a controlled temperature, Danboys, Great Lakes, and Metroenvironment, not Metroenvironment, but the first three have separate amounts at the bottom for their warranties. And I was just wondering if that's included in the total, or if that's to be added on to the total?
No, that would be, if it's listed separately, it would be added on to the total.
Okay, thank you. And is it per unit?
I will have to find that out.
Thank you.
So what's the difference in the price?
It's still less from Control.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you're still almost $2,000 less.
That $1,800 isn't per unit?
I still have to find that out.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have to get that clarified, too.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, it's still sort of slightly less.
Yeah, not much, but...
Yeah, it's 500 hours, close. Okay. Any other questions?
No. May I summarize, please, the information that we're securing and that we will be sending back out tomorrow? So one is with regard to the clarification of the licenses and the names in which they've been issued, specifically the mechanical license. The second is that they have all appropriate insurances and certifications. And then the third is, should we be accepting the warranty amount and utilizing that? Is it per unit? And then what that total cost would be if we include that? Were there any other questions? Okay. We will get the responses to those questions for you.
And then I'm going to mark that down as a regular agenda item pending the outcome of our additional research.
Yes.
Okay, and that will take us to Item 5B, results for, bid results for Career Center Air Handlers.
Yes, the business services and operations departments are recommending and seeking approval to award the replacement of two roof air handlers for the Livonia Career Technology Center to Temperature Services, Inc., Livonia, Michigan, at a total cost of $74,248. Temperature Services, Inc. is the lowest responsible bidder of the four vendors that bid, and seeking funds will be used for this purchase, and also that we have used the recommended better Temperature Services for their services in the past.
Any questions or comments? Questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, this will be regular agenda as well?
Yes.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Armalagus, and that concludes Building in Sight.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. This may go on record as being the shortest committee of the whole meeting in at least my six years on the Board. That does bring us to the end of our agenda this evening. Our next meeting is a voting meeting next Monday night. You can tune in at 7:00 if you wish. We'd love to have you. We are now adjourned. Thank you.